Good evening, Rockland, and welcome to the Rockland School Committee Meeting of March 26, 2018. Dan Vigance would like to apologize, he can't be here tonight, he has a little sickness in his family, but as usual, I'll be here trying to pick up and do as well as he does. First thing on the agenda, minutes of the school committee meeting of March 12, 2018.
Most agree.
Second.
All those in favor? Vote. No correspondence. I see we have an audience tonight with Janet Cook. Dr. Cron, would you like to introduce her?
Yeah, please. I'd like to invite up Principal Bond and Janet Cook and the One Book One School Committee.
I thought it might be appropriate, or it would be appropriate after Dr. Cron had mentioned our One Book One School Committee last week in the well that had been built in South Sudan. If I could publicly thank Janet Cook, who has brought -- this is Janet Cook right here, a wonderful tradition to the middle school with our One Book One School Committee, which I would invite all of you to come next fall and participate in if you have a moment. To just talk a little bit about the book that we read a few years ago, give you a little more insight into the program, because I really believe this is one of the best things that's happening in our building. So I wanted a chance to thank Janet for her to thank her committee and just give you a couple of minutes of what's been going on. So, Mrs. Cook?
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us, and this is partially the One Book One School Committee, starting with Cheryl Shipper, and then Heather Dunin, Joan Costello, Mara Carey right here. Missing from the committee is Nancy Gratton, she was not able to make it tonight, Steve Capone, and Peggy Foley. So we meet on a regular basis during the year. We started our One Book One School Committee in 2014, and every summer, we assign a book for the students within the whole school to read. The students read the book, the staff reads the book. After reading the book, we gather in the fall and we break down into small discussion groups. Staff is geared with lots of great discussions and invigorating discussions with the students, and it's been very successful, as Ms. Bond said. The students have grown to look forward to what's the next book. The staff is certainly also enthusiastic with it, and I also will just take the time to thank everybody within the whole school system for helping with this initiative. So tonight, we'll talk a little bit about the book that we used in 2015. So this would have been the second book that we read as an entire school, A Long Walk to Water by Linda Sue Park. And I thought that I would just start with a synopsis of the book, so that you'd have an understanding of the book a little bit, and then the project that ensued from that, and kind of where we got from our walk, I guess you could say, from here to there. So the book is a dual narrative, and you'll see some of the slides here that we actually use, all right, to introduce the book to the students, and sometimes some of these slides are also used as follow-up in the follow-up discussion groups in the fall. As I was saying, the book is a dual narrative, meaning that it's told from two characters' point of view, and the book is set in two different time periods. On the left, you'll see a young African girl. She is fictional, and her name is Naya, and she represents an actual African-American girl who, during this time of her life, she's about 15 years old, her expectation, because they don't have running water in a lot of these rural villages, is that she will take long walks for water. She has to gather water every day for her family. So she walks and walks and walks to fetch the water, and then walks and walks and walks back to her family. And she has to do this every day, seven days a week, 365 days of the year. Needless to say, because this is her responsibility within her family, education for her is very, very limited. So this becomes a problem for some of these rural villages. In addition, the water that a girl like this is going to bring back to her family is often infested with disease, so people become very, very ill, and often resulting in death as well. In the meantime, the book also features an actual character. This gentleman on the right is Salva Dutte, and the story is also the story of Salva Dutte. He's pictured here as an adult, but the story features him as an 11-year-old boy. And as an 11-year-old boy, his country of Sudan at the time is thick in the trenches of civil war. As an 11-year-old boy attending school, one day he hears bullets, all right, outside his schoolroom. His teacher tells him, "Run, run." He's forced to flee, forced to flee with nothing, forced to flee, leaving his family, leaving his village. And just the story goes on from there of how he survives for the next two years, the long trek and the long journey through the desert of Africa, the outback areas of Africa, and how he becomes one of the lost boys of Sudan. In my reading, there was about 1,500 lost boys of Sudan during that time. They managed, and Salva managed, to stay alive for two years in this kind of a situation, traveling through three countries, and eventually, he made it to a refugee camp in Kenya. So not only did he travel two years, but he traveled through three different countries to get to this refugee camp in Kenya. In Kenya, he's one of the fortunate ones. He eventually was relocated to America, a New York family in America. He went to school in America. He graduated from an American university. Upon graduation, he became a American citizen, and then, of course, he wanted to look back at his own story, where he came from, and how he could best tell his story. So Salva's mission then, in his life, became, how am I going to make a difference to my native country that I so loved, but that I was forced to flee? So from there, he began an organization called Water for South Sudan. Because, again, water is not sanitary for these rural villages, he came up with a way to introduce schoolchildren for gathering funds to raise water for his organization. So I'm going to turn this over to Joan Costello now, and she'll take over the next avenue.
So after we had our initial meeting, and we introduced the book to the kids, and then they read the book, and then in the fall, we got together and discussed the book. There was -- do I click here?
Yep.
Right-click. Okay. So we -- the kids were really, really moved, and they felt a need to do something, because they had this knowledge of a place that they didn't know of, and the plight of these girls and these communities in general. So we felt as if we needed to tap into their empathy and be able to actualize, you know, it. And so Water for Sudan was the organization that we looked into and found out about, and the Iron Giraffe Challenge is the challenge to school students to raise funds in order to get wells dug in South Sudan, so that these girls don't have to do this walk, and so that these villages have potable water. So this is what we decided to do. We're like, how are we going to do this awesome fundraising? Well, we decided that the best way that we could do it, and also kind of give them a sense of the walking, the carrying of water, so we decided to have a Walk-a-thon. And it was held at the Bicentennial Park, and all of the students were involved in it. They actually carried water jugs with them to give them a sense of what it meant to carry water. It was -- and we had to raise $6,000, because to get partial naming rights on a well and have our name, our Rogers Middle School, on a well somewhere in South Sudan, we needed the challenge was $6,000. So we thought that that was a pretty big number, but the kids were really, really excited about the possibility of making that change, and that our individual water drops could turn into a tidal wave. So we did our walk. That is the drill, by the way, that does -- that is the Iron Giraffe that does the drilling.
Yeah.
All right. So we decided that we were going to do this walk. We ended up getting all of the staff involved. Certainly, we didn't have to twist any arms, it was because everybody was moved by the story, and at this opportunity to take part in it. All right. So we decided that we were going to call it A Long Walk for Water, and this is our part. This is where -- am I still?
I'm still doing the pictures.
Still doing the pictures. Okay, awesome. All right. So here we are. We raised $4,451 with our Long Walk for Water, and it was -- I mean, it was just such a special day. Everybody was so excited, felt so good about doing something for a larger community, for our world community. Kids carried water. They all took turns trying to carry the water. And at the end, we came to -- we understood that we still needed $550 in order to meet our $6,000 goal. And so we needed an additional fundraiser. Okay, so here we are with our additional fundraising.
So our next fundraiser was for the kids. We did a Read-A-Thon. So the kids pledged to read a book, and they got pledges from their family members, and they pledged -- most of the kids were like $5 if they got a pledge, but we also had kids who pledged $20, like an aunt and uncle of parents said, "I'll pledge $20 if you read the book." So we needed the $550.
Grand total.
I thought I had one more. The grand total, though, we got was -- I did click right.
There it is.
Okay. We got six -- we got more than the $6,000, right?
We did.
We did. Six thousand, I can't see that. So they were so, so proud of themselves, and of course, we were also proud of them, too.
And then we waited. And we moved on to our next book, and we knew that this was happening, and there was a long rainy season in South Sudan, and the regular drilling season is in January, and we waited, and well, this last February 22nd, we got the letter that our well had been dug in Angu, in the Yargat Awil East, in South Sudan, and it's in the northern part of South Sudan, and the red arrow is pointed to the actual village location. And it was extraordinary to -- they've sent this letter of thanks, and they sent us pictures, and the pictures just made it so very, very real. It was quite a moment, because our fifth graders are now seventh graders, and I think that they understand, as they've matured and as they've gotten, you know, they've gotten older, and I think it really, really hit home that, you know, some things, they're worth the perseverance, and that we had to problem-solve, and how are we going to go about reaching that goal when we didn't hit it in one way, and that sometimes you have to wait for the great payoff, but we got the great payoff. And the $6,000 was supposed to be for partial naming rights, but in point of fact, we got full naming rights for a well. So there's a well with our school, fully funded, potable water for an entire community in Southern Sudan. So we're incredibly proud of our students and the staff. Everybody just was just fantastic.
Great day for the town of Rockland.
Yeah, it really was.
Really was.
It really was. The outpouring of love and donations was fantastic.
It sure was. So we'll just end by saying, this is another quote, that if you would come into our building --
That's the actual.
Oh, that's another picture. If you would come into our building at any time during that year that we were doing all of this, this is a quote that became a common mantra for our school. Stay calm when things are hard or not going right with you. You will get through it when you persevere instead of quitting. Quitting leads to less happiness in life, thank you, than perseverance and hope. So that was a quote that we used all year long, integrating that into daily lessons and curriculum, and --
Those are fantastic.
Those are Salva Dutte's words, too. Yep, thank you. Right.
Very good. That's wonderful, wonderful. Thank you, folks, really, for everything. What an awesome presentation. The kids obviously must be so proud of themselves, and one of the reasons that I do this is because of people like you, and you make me so, so proud, just to work with you folks, and to see something like that, that you people have accomplished, is wonderful. It really and truly is. Does anyone else have anything?
I have one question. I always have questions. Okay. One question. Were the students surprised at how much water weighed?
I think they were. Yeah, because they were like -- and at first, you know, they're putting it on their heads, and then as they get, you know, halfway around, you know, the quarter mile, like, oh, does someone else want to carry this? And these girls are carrying, you know, it's like six miles that they'll be carrying this water, and it's not just one gallon of water. So to make it actually real in some kind of way, I think that was, you know, a powerful kind of, I don't know, kinesthetic way to understand, to make those words be real to what meaningful, yet really very meaningful.
And some of the kids picked up two gallons in the PNA. They were going to walk, and then you go out like halfway, and then left one, and then someone else would pick it up. So they found out simply how heavy water is.
How much does it weigh, a gallon?
I have no idea.
I don't even know what ended up.
We should --
Good question.
Eight pounds a gallon.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
Eight pounds a gallon.
Eight pounds.
Right? If you're a Boy Scout, you go out in camp, you know, you worry about that stuff.
Right. It's interesting that you bring that up, though, because also, as part of the research, they were saying that a lot of these young girls grow into womanhood, having so many problems with their hips and their legs and such, because they have to carry all of that water.
Like, you've got a container, I mean, that had to be at least six or eight gallons, and it was a ceramic container, as you pointed out, so that had to be heavy as well.
But also keeps them from being, having any kind of political voice, you know, as well as educational voice, so it really cuts women out of the community, yet they bear the burden of making sure that their family stays alive. And it's also incredibly dangerous.
What's through there, though? What's through there? You people do that here.
Well, I'll just add, too, I was thinking of this. In addition, they were saying that once the well is dug in these rural villages, that schools then start to spring up around these wells. Marketplaces start to spring up around these wells. So, you know, it just, as was seen, it opens up a future for these people on so many different levels, whether it be trade and commerce, or certainly education.
Decreasing conflict as well. And one last thing. The thing that I thought was most special is that this was organically the kids' idea. You know, we facilitated what they needed to do, and if we didn't have their passion behind it, then it certainly, it just wouldn't have worked. But as we had these discussion groups, it was organically popping up all over the building, like, now that we know about this, we have to do something about it. And that's actually, you know, I mean, that's such important citizenship message, you know, citizenship for the world, for our town, is that if you've identified the problem, you no longer can just be a bystander.
I remember that day in November, too. It was a glorious, glorious day. Blue skies, sunny, and just the hordes of people coming from the middle school to Bicentennial Park. And I had to go early, you know, to prepare a few things, but honestly, I got chills, and I got tears, and I do now. I got tears in my eyes when I remember that. It was just, it was just an awesome, such a proud moment. So I have to stop now.
Thank you very much. These books are ours, so we could have three.
You should be sure. You may read those.
You've got to return them.
Absolutely. Please do. You'll love it.
Says probably the library.
As Ms. Bond said, we'll keep your prize for this year's selection.
What are some of the other books you've read?
The first book, we read Out of My Mind by Sharon Draper. This was the second book. The third book was called One for the Murphys by Linda Mullally Hunt, and that's a story about a child in foster care. And then last summer's book was called Glory Bee, set during Freedom Summer of 1961.
Dr. Smith had a question or comment?
Small.
Small.
I just want to say that, you know, we trust you with our students, and you do us so proud. The lessons that they have learned from this experience are so clearly so much more than the literature, so I just want to thank you all for that. I think, you know, the lessons in humanity, in being good citizens, in being aware, are so intangible and so hard to teach, and this was clearly an excellent way of doing that, so I just want to thank you all. I'm so proud of you, and I hope you are all proud of yourself, and proud of the students, and I'm going to get emotional, too, now. But so thank you all from the depths of my heart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Very good. Great job.
Next on the agenda, Dr. Cron, your report.
Yes, I just have two things. The first of which, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Ms. Claire Payne. And those of you that have met Claire, you'll never forget having met her, because she's a powerhouse. But she stopped in today on behalf of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States Auxiliary, and she's just such a tireless giver to this community, and I think the community of Abington as well, and she's just a delight, and I just wanted to give a shout-out from on behalf of the schools to Claire. She involves each of our five schools, as well as Holy Family, in poster contests and trying to keep this idea, the importance of civics and patriotism, and being grateful to those who serve in the military and who have served in the military, and from one end of the spectrum to the other, our young children who are involved in civics that now go well beyond our borders, to someone like Claire Payne. She is someone that we should be very grateful to have in our lives. So thank you very much, Claire. And I will tell a funny story. No, I won't. I would now like to invite, the second and final part of my report, I'd like to invite Dr. Harrison to come up and to just give a brief overview of our new website, which we'll be launching momentarily. And I've asked, for the last month or two, Dr. Harrison has been sort of working on a punch list with the -- so he's been our OPM of websites, and he's been busy working with Mr. Guilfoyle, so I just wanted to give him some time to talk about what this is going to look like when we launch it.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I thought it'd be easiest if I show a few screenshots from the website, and then if you want, I could navigate it for you, just because if I start scrolling, you'll get a headache if I go up and down too many times. But when you log on to the website, which we're hoping will be live shortly, you'll see that on the top, you'll see three key icons, which we identified, which are the events calendar, Google Drive, and Aspen X2. And then you'll see four different tabs, and I'll actually just kind of go -- I think I have -- I thought I had two more before. To talk a little bit about the process of the website before I even go into this, we started this back in September. In September, with Mr. Guilfoyle and his public relations company, they work with WordPress to design the layout of the website. So that really was from September through December. They came and took pictures, and then in January through pretty much now in March, the principals and staff had been looking at the functionality of it and trying to make changes. We recommended some changes, and Mr. Guilfoyle made those changes. So we're at a point where we're pretty much ready to launch, so my goal is to just kind of take you through a tour. You will see that there are a bunch of different top tabs there. The district, our schools, district, and students and families, and then staff. We came up with those four navigational headings, because we think that's what's most important to not just our community, but our parents know where to go. Students and families, our staff know where to go, and then our district and schools, which will have a lot of good information. In the middle of the page, you'll see that it's very press release-driven. So what you'll see in the -- so there's three tiers. The top tier has this. The middle tier has press releases. So these six press releases, they keep rotating based on what principals decide to upload. So you'll see that Beth, Ms. Bond, did a Shamrock Classic post. I did a Top Dog post and an Arts Festival post recently. So principals can be updating that regularly. The bottom of the page has the upcoming events on the bottom left, and Twitter on the bottom right. So those are kind of the pieces of the functionality of the main page. There's another view there. Oops. Oh, can you go to the PowerPoint, Mr. Cable Murphy? This is so funny. I meant to be in the PowerPoint. You'll see what I mean. It's funny, because I was, I thought I was going to the next slide. This wasn't even the slideshow. This was just the main screen. I kept going down, and I was like, what is going on? I go, I had all these slides prepared. So there we go. This is the timeline that we just spoke about. April 1st, we're planning to launch, and then in the summer, we really want to make revisions based on initial feedback after this initial launch. So I kind of talked, spoke orally about the timeline. Some key features about the website. It allows for staff to update information at their disposal. Previously, we had one person in the district updating information, so it took a little extra time to get information out to families. This is going to really make things easier for everyone. It's very user-friendly, you're going to find. Easy translation functionality, so you can translate to any language. Portuguese, especially for our community, is going to be very helpful. One button will translate the whole page. There's an events calendar, which is synced through Google Calendar, and you're really going to notice a lot of consistency in the format amongst all the schools, as well as branding, and I think you're going to see that through the press releases. We pointed to this earlier. We pointed to this earlier as well. This is the middle of the page. This is the bottom of the page, the events calendar and the Twitter. Up top, you'll see the district tab. The district tab has a lot of key pieces of information, our core values, school committee who has a page with the school committee members and a nice picture that you took last week. Office of the Superintendent, Dr. Cron, will have his entry plan there, and other key information. Curriculum instruction and assessment, so families are going to be able to see frameworks, the curriculum frameworks for each discipline area. They're going to see assessments. Our state report cards will be there, and some instructional resources as well. Business and finance, we'll have some information on our budget presentations. Health services, we'll have health-related information. Human resources, we'll have job postings and our procedures for applying for jobs within the district. And then special education, pupil services, and technology. So those are some really -- the organization is very consistent with a lot of other schools, so if you want to learn anything about the district, these are all the different departments that Dr. Cron oversees. Our schools, so now then you look at the schools. So we have all of our schools, including preschool and daycare. If you click each of the schools, it'll take you to that school's page. Each of those pages look very consistent, except for daycare right now, which we'll work on streamlining soon. Students and families, you'll see the top -- we've identified these tabs as being most important to families. The district calendar. New student registration is a new area, which I think families will like. They'll have the packet they can just download versus having to come in, and then they can bring it right to the office if they choose. School choice, bus schedules, school lunch program, My School Box, Google Drive, X2 Aspen, and then elementary school websites. And then for staff, ASOP, that's how they get sub-coverage, Smart PD, which is how they keep track of their professional development, and then technology trouble tickets, Google Drive, and then instructional technology. So this is the basic navigation of the website. One of the neat features is a calendar. I'm still trying to figure out how it all works, but it does sync through Google Calendar. This is the month view. There's also a week view and a day view. This is a sample elementary school page. So you'll see on the left side, About Esten. All of them look the same. About Esten, monthly newsletter, core values, school improvement plans, driving directions, staff directories, student handbook, school bus information, anti-bullying plan, academics, activities. I really think the academics and the activities pages are going to be very useful for families. Academics pages includes things, just foundations, will include any of the math programs that are doing math, I forget the name of the elementary program, but what they use, the elementary level. Activities will have things on how to get involved in after-school clubs. And on the right, you'll see each principal will have their Twitter page, their Twitter, which is really their breaking news and their neat pictures. At the bottom of each of the elementary school pages, you'll see upcoming events on the left. You'll see their press releases. So for the elementary school, Esten, that Arts Festival is a district-wide event, so we can select off, we can check off so that press release appears at all of the schools. And then Puerto Rico is an example press release for them. The high school page and the middle school page look very similar. The difference between the middle and high school pages and the elementary school pages is you'll see that they have a special menu, where it says About Us, Guidance, Academics, and Activities. And that's because at this point, we broke down the academics into sub-pages, which you'll see. You'll see that the upcoming events looks a little higher, and then at the bottom, you'll see the press releases. So you see a consistent format. The high school and the middle school both have this About Us page, which looks similar to what the elementary schools had on the left side. You'll see Meet the Administrative Team, Bell Schedule, School Improvement Plans, Student Handbook, basically easy resource documents. We put our video that Mr. Cable Murphy and the digital media students did, so that is right at the center there of that page. You'll see my Twitter on the right, and you'll see a summary of Rockland High School at the bottom. the bottom. Academics, I think this is going to be a very valuable resource as we move along. Each of our disciplines, and the Middle School has it by team, the High School has it by subject, grade, subject. So you'll see each of our departments has a page. On that page includes our course descriptions. It includes our faculty. It includes pictures and summaries of key events, such as like Poetry Out Loud, the Spellman Oratorical. So it has some news from each department. Science will have pictures of robotics, summer reading, world languages. So you'll see, I think those really drives home the academic focus. So you'll see a big emphasis on academics on the webpage. And some really cool pictures. Let's scroll. Guidance, this is another good resource. This Guidance page will be a lot more intricate. You'll see we have helpful links on the right side there. And on the left, you'll see the Guidance Staff, Course Selection Information, all the forms that used to have to come to Guidance to pick up, you can now get on the website. Testing Information, Key Dates for PSATs, MCAS, Advanced Placement. And then the Future Planning, which I think is really going to develop as we move along, some nice resources for families on the college and career readiness factor and how to get ready for the future. So that's the Guidance page. And then Activities, this is where I think will really help us communicate with families in terms of what's happening after-school hours. You'll see we have basic medical release forms, registration and user fee information. But at the bottom of the page, you're going to see we have a link for every club and sport team. That's a big deal if you think about, now families can click the wrestling link and find out the wrestling team's record, find pictures, find the coach's information, all on one page. And I think that families will like that feature. Same thing with Key Club and Environmental Club. So every page has its own information, which I think in each advisor, if they wanted to, could update it if they wanted. So that's kind of the overall design of the website. There is a lot more information. One of the big, in speaking to Mr. Guilfoyle, one of his big pushes for the website was instant information, getting information to families quickly. And press releases and those blog posts which you see here at the bottom, that's the best way that schools seem to be doing it, from what he has said. So we're looking forward to it. Something different.
Can we see what the site looks like?
Sure.
This is like seeing blown-up portions of it?
Well, let's have a, I have a quick question. Who has access to upload this stuff?
Just in each, I knew you were going to ask that. I didn't want to interrupt Dr. Harrison. In each building, each principal will designate a single person.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's very, going to be very tightly controlled.
Yeah.
Although, we link, yeah, we link to a lot of individual Google sites now. But yeah, basically what we've gone from is one person having access to it to.
Several people, yeah.
Yeah. So.
But it's controlled.
Much quicker. Oh, yeah.
That's my concern.
So here's the basic, this is the website live here. You'll see that's the middle of the page which we spoke about. You'll see the bottom.
Yeah, it's so giant.
That's the district homepage. And then you'll see, Dr. Kron, would you like me to go into anything in particular?
No, no, I was actually looking, I just wanted him to see what it looks like to scale, but it doesn't matter. We can't see it to scale, right? It's so big. There's no way to see, yeah, that's fine. It's a really nice-looking site, is my point. It's a good-looking site.
Beats the site that they have now. Is that, it's not available now?
It's, we have it, we have the beta of it. And it'll be launched, when we're ready to launch it. I didn't want to wait till the next School Committee meeting because I think we want to get it out before that. So I wanted you to just get a look at it. If I, yeah.
Publicize it to the total district, all the kids, families.
I think it gives us the ability to sort of hand someone a card. Or to say, Google Rockland Public Schools, and boom.
That's great.
If I could, you know, Dr. Harrison, I asked him, I'd say two months ago now, six weeks, eight weeks, to help me finish this thing, help me bring this home. He has spent probably in the area of 40 to 50 hours of his own time, not only doing the coding and fixing a lot of things, but communicating with the Guilfoyle associates, and also working with each individual principal to teach them and their staff member how to upload this. So to me, it's an excellent example of leadership. Leadership means getting it done. And I so appreciate that, Dr. Harrison. And I think we have a site that the town and the schools can be proud of.
Looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kron.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Nothing like a nice new website.
Yeah. Good stuff.
You know, I think it's a first impression, right?
Exactly.
And that is top-notch.
It looks, you can't get a sense, because we're, I'm so used to seeing A-screen, so you don't get the whole sense, the way it lays out. You're seeing it in three different sections, but it's very clear that it's, it's meant to be very visually, to draw you in visually, and it's meant to focus on the kids. It has a very much an academic focus, but it doesn't obviously ignore all of our extracurriculars and athletics.
Well, I have to imagine that it's probably mobile-friendly, which the current one is not.
Not. Right.
I mean, the current site is not any type of friendly.
Yeah.
So I think this is huge.
Yeah, we're excited.
It's a definite thing that, oh, I mean, you look at it and go, the schools have it together. All their information is here. We're not jumping from 12 different things that this football post is from five years ago when we had a different coach and those kids are all out of college.
It's sort of like, you have this, you have this brownstone that people have been living in for 100 years, and all these little rooms, and all this stuff is stuck in it. So we built a brand-new building next to it, and we very carefully placed what we wanted and thoughtfully. So it's, it's exciting, but it's a lot of work. And again, thank you to Dr. Harrison.
Nice colors.
Yeah.
That makes a big difference.
It would be nice, too, Doctor, this business meeting that you're going to have in a week or two.
Yes.
If you could have anything ready to hand out to those folks.
Oh, no doubt.
Advertising that site, because it could be helpful to many of the businesses, including realtors.
Businesses, realtors, right. The Building Committee. And again, the great work that Mr. Murphy has done with his production classes. So we have those videos that are also very, I think, you know, give people a sense of what we're all about.
Right.
I also just think there's a lot of really good stuff going on in the schools that isn't always highlighted.
Oh, yeah.
And having a website like that, that is just, I mean, it easily displays it. It also looks very professional, very put together, has more than enough information that somebody would be looking for. I think it's, it's really top-notch.
It's such a moving target. We don't, I have no idea, what is social media going to look like in five years? How do we know?
What, a year?
A year, right? How do we know?
What's going to happen to Facebook after their FTC investigation?
Right, so, we tried to design it in a way that allowed it to be consistent, but also updatable by each individual building.
Right.
Because there is so much going on. So, anyway, we're very happy with it. I think the principals are happy.
And navigation of the website, you know, you get through that and you start looking at it, it's like, oh, I'm back here again, how did I get here? You know, I don't know where I want to go.
I think it, yeah. It just speaks volumes in terms of, it literally will show people how much we have.
Yeah.
What we have going on.
No doubt about it.
And that we can get it out there.
Yeah.
And I think that's the ultimate goal. So I think it's great. Great job.
Anything else, Doctor?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
I should also thank the secretary at the high school, J. S. Couch, who's been filling in, has just done an extraordinary job with the website. She did pretty much all of the academic and activity pages, so I just want to make sure she gets credit on the air when she watches.
Wonderful. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, under Reports, we have five financial reports. School Department, High School Student Activities, Middle School Student Activities, Cafeteria, and Daycare.
Five motions to approve.
Five seconds.
All those in favor?
As long as you want to talk about the vote. Did you want to say anything about the financial reports?
Did I want to say anything about the financial reports? Not, not really.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next on the, next on the reports, we have 18 monthly reports, including Art, Athletics, Computer Technology, Daycare, Dean's Report, English 5 through 8, English 9 through 12, Family, Consumer Science, Technology, Health, Physical Education, Math, 5 through 8, Math, 9 through 12, Music, Radio, TV Station, Science, Social Studies, Special Education, Middle School, and Foreign Language.
Good reading.
I would entertain.
Eighteen motions to approve.
Eighteen seconds.
All those in favor? The vote?
Could I just throw in on that?
Yes, you may.
It's become one of my favorite things to do, to really read these very, very carefully.
Yeah, mine too.
And I'll, I'll tell you, you know, the work that, the work that's going on in the classrooms, if you really want a sense of what's going on, these reports are great. And if anyone at home ever wants copies of things, I see no reason why we couldn't share these. It's, it's very impressive. I keep, I love a lot of them, but the High School and the Middle School English reports are always extraordinary and.
Technology as well.
Ms. Cahill and Ms. Cook really deserve a lot of, but they're all, they're all phenomenal. Like Mike, it's interesting, too, the different disciplines, the way they write are different. So Mr. Casa Grande at the high school may write a very short report, but there's a lot in there. And the other person might write five pages, and there's a lot in there. So it's, it's fun to keep up with what's going on. So thank you.
And the time that they take, and you know there's an awful lot of thought, an awful lot of time put into just creating these reports.
They know you read them.
Yeah, well, I hope so, because it's the only way we have of really.
That's right.
Yeah, and it's.
They know you read them.
Very interesting.
It's nice to see the disrespectful behavior between the sophomores, juniors, and seniors is not existent.
Yes. As far as we know.
Well, according to the Dean's Report, it is.
Is there any other questions?
No.
Okay. Under Old Business, the second reading of the school calendar for the 2018-2019 school year.
It's good to make. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Anywhere.
Let's just hope we don't get any snow.
We have a couple of requests for fundraisers. Girls' Tennis is going to have a bake sale in April. And the National Honor Society is going to have a bake sale in April. You have a recommendation on them?
I recommend that we approve them, and I appreciate people getting the fundraising requests in on a timely manner. That makes the School Committee happy, which makes me happy.
Motion to approve.
Two motions. Two motions?
Just the votes.
Two seconds.
All those in favor? Vote. Under Personnel Information, first I would ask, Ms. Jones, do you have anything? And incidentally, congratulations, tell us a little bit about the walkout.
Oh, so we were snowed out of the walkout on the 17th when the, when everyone else was participating, but we pushed it back to the 18th. And so we still participated. We walked out for 17 minutes. Mr. Harrison dismissed us. And we were, if anyone's familiar with the high school, we were outside by the gym entrance. And so in between the gym entrance and the Memorial Stadium. And so we were there. The students that organized it had a few speakers arranged. And so one girl read a poem, two of them had small speeches. And then later on during the day, during lunch, for kids that are 16 and above in Massachusetts, you're eligible to pre-register to vote. And so the kids had someone sitting at a table allowing kids to register to vote.
Oh, good.
Which was cool.
Great, great. Do you have anything else you want to enter the meeting?
Did you go into Boston?
No, I know a few students that did, but I personally did not.
You weren't alone having to postpone that day either. There were other schools, I noticed, that did the same thing. And the entire student body is to be congratulated the way that they handled themselves and the way that the event happened. And you exercised your first rights under the Constitution, and I think, I think it's great. Very proud of you guys.
And you did something productive.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Registered to vote.
Exactly.
How many, do you know how many people registered to vote?
Um, I don't.
Okay.
But off the top of my head.
Okay, did you register?
I did.
Okay.
400, 300 students participated.
Oh, good.
Which is more than half the student body, so it's very impressive and very well done.
Very good. Thank you.
Personnel Information, do you have anything?
I do, I do have something. There are five folks here who either left or joined us, and one of the names gives me great pleasure to welcome Adrian Donovan as a full-time faculty member of the Rockland Public Schools. She is our new High School Family and Consumer Science teacher. And Ms. Donovan has been a very important part of the school community for many, many years, and served in a variety of capacities. And it's, it gives me great pleasure to welcome her as a full-time faculty member. Our kids are very fortunate and we are too. So thank you, Adrian. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Congratulations, I should say.
Under Public Service Announcements, Dr. Small.
So I will just say that spring has started. While it doesn't feel like spring, but the weather should catch up with us very soon. In the world of pediatrics, we see this as the time where we transition from being sick with colds to being in emergency rooms with injuries. So just want to remind everyone to be safe out there and make sure that you're wearing helmets when you're on bikes, on scooters, all those sorts of things. We don't want to see anybody with unnecessary injuries.